I'd like to call it December twelfth, twenty twenty-two, Calhoun County Council meeting in order. John, would you give us an application, please?
Yes, sir. Lord, for your presence with us tonight, we give you thanks. And for just one more time, I just want to praise you for how you blessed us over these years, Lord. Just give us wisdom as we consider the people's business tonight and let's make decisions that are pleasing your sight and good for the people of Calhoun County. We pray in the name of Christ our Lord. Amen.
May I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Properly moved and seconded any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose is likewise aye as had it.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for letting me be up here to speak tonight. I want to talk to you on the ordinances twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight that are on the agenda tonight. By first reading title only. This reading thing by title only is really a transparency issue. I don't know how we ask you gentlemen to vote on something that we're not even telling you what you're voting on. You're voting on a title, but you don't know what's behind that title. This may be a great resolution, it may be the best thing that ever happened to Calhoun County. But it also may not be. This may be a horrible decision for Calhoun County. We've got a title here for number twenty-seven to dissolve the fire commission and change the duties and responsibilities of the fire commission for Sandy Run and Calhoun County Rural Fire District. Not one chief in this county has been brought up to speed or knows anything about what's going on with this. And that is... Yes, sir, just stop for three minutes, please.
Well, we'll start you back and give you back. But I don't want, you know, well, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. Well, go ahead and say what you want to say.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Not one fire chief in this county has been brought up to speed on what's going on with this. And to me, that's extremely alarming. We have a tremendous, as you look around this room tonight, men and women that volunteer that know, they get nothing out of it. They volunteer for the goodness of their heart to help this county. And they want this county to succeed and to have the best fire service we can have. And we don't have a chief that has any clue what's going on. And again, I don't know, maybe this is the greatest thing to ever happen to Calhoun County. But maybe it's not. So how do we ask you five gentlemen to sit up here tonight and to vote on something that you don't even know what you're voting on? So I'm simply going to ask you this. I would like you to bring a motion to postpone this vote. I can't do that. One of you five gentlemen would have to do that. But I think that would be the best thing to do is let's pump the brakes and let's figure out what this resolution is about and have an open discussion with the fire chiefs of this county prior to making a decision to change something that we don't even know what we're at being asked to change. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Good job.
Phil D., Phil, as you come, let me, let me just tell you this also, your time hasn't started yet. I apologize for the last time you were here. I told you you couldn't speak only one thing. Go along, you stay within your three minutes you can.
Now, fair to me. It's good to see everybody again. I'm finally catching up on some things that are going on. And one of the things I saw in an old paper was the twenty thousand dollars that we ended up short for the fire department, for the fire engine in Sandy Run. What I'd like you to discuss and talk to the audience about is, number one, have we made up the money and if so, where's it coming from? And number two, have we put in controls so that that never happens again? If you just answer those questions, that's all I ask. Thank you.
Justin, come here.
Good evening, gentlemen. I had zero plans of speaking tonight, but I received a phone call from my assistant chief. And we would be remiss as a department if we didn't recognize the fact that this is Councilman Nelson's last meeting, to my understanding, I believe. So I wanted to come up here and acknowledge, from Sandy Run Fire Department to the council and to John Nelson specifically for your help throughout the years. John's been a huge advocate and help to us in getting some changes made and being our voice for us to y'all. So from the Sandy Run Fire Department, thank you, and council, thank you for everything.
Good job. Now, we have a public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three. Third reading of ordinance, depending on building code and regulations. Third reading. Richard, do you understand anything that we can kind of save it off? It's just kind of like an update, I think, on whatever we do. It's not nothing new. Okay. If no, no comment from the public, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three now closed. We go down to ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two, third reading. An ordinance to authorize and approve the execution and delivery of First Amendment to the fee and rule of tax agreement between Los Angeles, L L C, and Calhoun County, South Carolina, dated as of May tenth, twenty twenty-one. The other matters may be there to have a motion for approval of third reading.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve third reading of, and I will go back because we didn't do.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, twenty, well, they got them in reverse order. So I'll give twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two first. I move that we give third reading to ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two. That's the second one on the page.
Okay, let me just explain how I missed that. We normally used to go through the public hearing first and then, sorry about that. Okay. Now, with twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two.
Twenty-two, the number two on the, on the public.
Okay, a motion for approval of that, now a second.
Second, yeah.
Properly moved and seconded any further discussion?
Yes, sir. I'd like to abstain from voting, please, on it. And I'd like to give you a statement of the highest stance.
Richard, do you want to state your reason for standing?
I'm abstaining from voting for the reason I'm a landowner in Friday.
Okay.
Oh, you hear that? Did I do that?
Yeah.
Okay. Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three, if you're going to make a motion.
Yes, sir, I move that we give third reading to ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three.
Now, second.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose is likewise aye as had it. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a motion for approval of the November twentieth, twenty-two. Now, second. Properly moved and seconded for approval, depending on further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose is likewise aye as had it. Do we have any committee reports?
No.
Any appointments?
Yes, sir, I have one. Wanted to reappoint Barry Hill, the planning commission that you did this month. So that means forty-four times, so.
Go ahead, second.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose is likewise aye as had it. You don't have anything other proclamations, uh, appearances? Here, Miss Melissa Adams, Center for Ears Property Preservation.
Good evening.
Evening.
Thank you for having me tonight. I'm North Lisa Adams from the Center for Ears Property Preservation. I'm the outreach liaison for Calhoun County. So today, I just wanted to share information with you all to let you know that we are serving this area, helping the community with heirs property by offering free legal services. Our lawyers, we have five within our agency right now. And they have been already been able to help individuals in Calhoun. We also have our legal, I'm sorry, forestry department that's helping individuals who are interested in doing forestry land management, as well as offering them technical assistance. So as a nonprofit organization, we haven't been charging, you know, for a lot of our services through the center. But this Friday, December sixteenth, we will be at the Calhoun County Library. And at twelve noon, we will be offering a free heirs property seminar. And it's open to all in the community. Next year, we will be also at one in Richland County. Here, we've been able to work with the NRCS USDA. We've been to the tax and specialist's office, as well as the probate court, to continue to spread this information. So if anyone could utilize our services, or if you know anyone that could utilize anything that we're currently doing, I just ask that you just please let us know because we've been able to help people, you know, clear titles, as well as offering drafting of simple wills. So anyone that's over the age of eighteen can go through our center to get a will. We offer free wills clinics. And anyone that is past the age of eighty can call us and get a free will. We have an office in the Orangeburg County office, that's our satellite office, as well as we're getting ready to branch off into Florence. And then where our main office is in the Opportunity Center in North Charleston, on Rivers Avenue. So I really just wanted to come here and talk to the council, let you all know who we are and what we are doing.
Any questions?
I don't want to, can you give me that date and time of that meeting and location again?
So it is this Friday, December sixteenth, at the Calhoun County Library. And we will be starting at twelve noon. We would love to have you all there.
Anybody else?
Um, yeah, I guess y'all are clearing up the things like the ed-out properties where, I mean, you're assisting with that as well, like, you know, where people die and that's the level.
Yes.
And so-and-so ed-out, which the people all over the world, I mean.
Right, right. And we've been able to also be a blueprint for the Justice Center, as well as in Mississippi. So right now, we serve twenty-two counties in South Carolina. Next year, we'll be serving Richland, Creston, and, as well as, is Creston, oh, Chesterfield. So we add those two counties up to the end of the twenty-five. So, um, we're, you know, we're growing. The, you know, goal is to be in all forty-six counties, but like you said, we're helping all over. Anyone even outside of South Carolina can call us and talk to the legal center pro bono. They all have the right to talk to us one or at least an hour.
Any more questions? Thank you, madam.
Thank you.
Now, that Crystal Young's EMS update.
Good evening.
Evening.
I came here last time, I gave you an idea that we're doing the community paramedic program. And wanted to give you a brief update. We have received our recognition from the HEAG in August first of this year. It's good for four years, we'll have to reterrify every four years. We have a total of two people that have completed all of the requirements for the certification. One's nationally registered at this point in time. We have one more that's going to be testing soon. We have three more that are completing the program currently. We are seeing, we have seen about eighteen patients. Eight of those have been enrolled since August first. The ages range from thirty-eight to eighty-five. They're all within Calhoun County, just for our citizens. We are doing a hundred percent of all the patients that we've seen. We've done a hundred percent home safety assessments, fall screening, medication compliances with these patients, hypertension monitoring with the patients, and also helping with whatever their main concerns are. We spoke with a couple of them last week. We're kind of doing a quality assurance by actually speaking with the individuals via the telephone, or whichever method that we can. Some of them don't have telephones. One lady was speaking about her brother. She was afraid her brother was going to have to go into a nursing home and didn't want to have to do that because he couldn't get around as well as he was prior. Since we've been going out there to help him, she says that he has been in better spirits, is acting and feeling a little bit better. Captain Starr is the paramedic that's been going out to see him. Has been extremely nice and helpful. He takes time to explain everything, goes over their medications and the doctor's notes for them because sometimes the patients just absolutely can't breathe. So that's one of the things that our community paramedics are trying to help them with. The family states they hope this program continues so that we can keep helping others like her brother. Another one talked about Captain Will Williamson. She has started seeing a patient in September. He says the weekly fill box, we got a weekly fill box to organize his medications for when he needs to take them. That helps him remember which medications to take at what times. He goes on to say, when his prescriptions are low, she makes sure that he gets them refilled, helps him get his medications from the pharmacist to give to him. He states that the program that his doctor, Captain Williamson, has suggested to help elevate his legs have also helped his legs from hurting and getting as well as they're down and has helped him feel better, more confident. And he's doing what the doctors request and taking medications like he's supposed to. With all of that, just to kind of give you an idea of what has helped us, our call volume from August first to August first, this is the timeframe, was three thousand nine hundred ninety-four. The year before, the call volume was only about thirty-three hundred calls. So in one year, we've increased significantly. With that, we have reduced a thirty-seven percent reduction rate in non-emergent ambulance with these patients. So we're seeing them, we're going out and following up with them. So we've actually reduced their, their need for EMS. We have added these patients, also had a reduction in readmissions to the hospital by what we couldn't expect, about eighty-three percent, because they called us previously. And also eighty-eight percent, it helps us to get back in service quicker. So we're staying in the community and able to help the patients better. That's just kind of a brief overview. Do you have any questions about the program?
Just like to thank you all for your job and doing, man, Chris. Appreciate what you all say. You all always do a good job.
Thank you.
Anybody that have a question? Thank you, ma'am.
Good job.
As a resolution, we don't have anything, all business, the Haywood lease approval. John, any, if we just need to.
You just need to approve that.
Yes, and I move that we approve the Haywood lease that we would negotiated earlier. I move an approval of that lease by the county.
Properly moved and seconded any further, further discussions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose is likewise aye as had it. County, I didn't, John, anything else on the whole business?
Yes, sir.
Okay, under new business, the county holiday schedule approval.
Yes, sir, we've got the new, the holidays for the upcoming year. And they are New Years, Martin Luther King Day, Presidents' Day, Good Friday, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Veterans' Day, Thanksgiving, and Christmas. I'd like to ask for you to approve those for the upcoming year, please, sir.
Okay. We have a motion that we approve the county holiday schedule.
So moved. Second.
Properly moved and seconded, that we approve the county holiday schedule, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose is likewise aye as had it. John, December twenty-sixth meeting is when we normally, and that is around Christmas time. We don't have a lot going on around here.
Yes, sir.
We need a motion for that.
Yes, sir, please.
We have a motion that we have to pass, we.
So moved.
Twenty fifteen, seventy, twenty sixteen.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose is likewise aye as had it. The RFP twenty-two oh six, the San Diego Community Park bid. You don't hear, Richard?
Yes, sir. So this is the San Diego Community Park bid. We put it out for bid, we received three bids. And the low bid was of cane construction. This is to design and build thirteen hundred and twenty linear feet long by five foot wide aggregate surface track. And the bid amount was one hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars. And that's for a four-inch concrete walking track with poly prep for rubber installation. The funding sources for that one forty-one, a hundred thousand from state appropriations, seventy-two from capital improvement for rec, and fifty thousand for US, from USDA grant.
So the total amount was what now?
One forty-one five five six.
Does that add up to that amount? Does that amount that not add up?
Yes, sir. Well, the, the funds, the USDA fund is still fifty plus, is what it's going to be. We're getting final numbers back from USDA, but we know we've got fifty. The additional will be the, is what we're going after.
It's currently going.
Yes.
Current, current level, what we have.
A hundred thou- a hundred thousand from state appropriations.
A hundred thousand.
Seventy-two from capital improvement.
Right.
And fifty from USDA.
Okay.
Okay? So two hundred, that's more than enough.
More than that, that's more.
Yes. So, okay, well, just, well, are we holding the residual of the files to put for some other rep projects?
Yes, sir, the USDA piece, yes, sir.
And that'll be for a few future vote?
Future vote, yes, sir. For quit, things of that nature related to that project.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we award okaying construction bid of a hundred and forty-one five fifty-six for the situation of the San Diego Community Park.
Second. Properly moved and seconded any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose is likewise aye as had it.
There you go.
Now, the ordinance is, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-four. An ordinance to bend and chapter forty-two land development regulations of the county, Calhoun County Code of Ordinance. Somebody will talk a minute. I wish you all also, I mean, Mr. Raceback had a question about why we did do this, do it like that. And I wish you tell why we introduced an ordinance the way that we have to introduce.
We can address that. Yes, sir, so this is second reading, as I spoke last time. This is an update to the land development regulations for the county. This is mostly ministerial in nature. We're making it coincide with our zoning ordinance. So the land development regulations were done before zoning, so they didn't exactly line up. Things like, we copied and pasted DEHEAC regulations, flood plain development regulations into our ordinance. Now, we just reference those. Two of the main changes that the planning commission approved. One was to reduce the lot size of a subdivision that requires curb and gutter from one acre to a third of an acre lot. And then the other one was administrative approval of small subdivisions of six lots or less. Anything over six lots goes to the planning commission for approval for subdivision purposes. In your packet, you should have the kind of executive summary that lists all the changes, but those are highlights.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt, I'll give second reading to ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-four.
We have a second.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose is likewise aye as had it. Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-five, second reading, ordinance to change the zoning destination. TMS, number oh twenty-one, dash zero zero, dash zero zero, dash zero one one. From rural neighborhoods, community, commercial, industrial, community, commercial, industrial.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. So this is the second reading of an ordinance to remove the residential zoning off of this parcel. This came to you prior as San Diego crossing. This, this property is now being, the request is to rezone it to just community, commercial, and industrial. So no, no residential zoning on the parcel at all.
Now, have a motion for approval.
Second. I mean, totally.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, any further discussion?
Can I ask a question?
I'm sorry, you can't take a question. Sorry, I can't take one from the floor. I can't take one from the floor. I'm sorry. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose is likewise aye as had it. Mr. Philly, if, I'll say this, if you do have a question, you can call the legislative officers. And they'll, they'll ask you questions.
That's accurate, that.
I'm telling you, but we go by procedures in here, that's what we go by. Not by accident, but. Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six, I think this is the one I was talking about. When Mr. Raceback talked about the first reading, ordinance by title only.
The, the next one's the one I was.
Well, I thought you said several of them.
Well, it was all three of them. The one in question is the twenty-fourth.
We'll, we'll address all of them, we'll tell you why, I guess. Okay, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six, we may have a motion for first, for first reading.
I'll second.
Properly moved and seconded.
Any explanation on that?
Properly moved and seconded, I don't know, I got some explanations myself on it. The boards and the commissions is. We've had problems just like the whole state of South Carolina. I mean, with this whole state of the county, I hope somebody else who's got a chance to sit in on it. Board and commission have been a problem with this entire state. I guess practically it is because, if for some reason, I mean, stuff just worked the way it worked. Younger folks don't participate in the system like they used to. And we've, a lot of our board and commission, we have elderly people. Some of them are sickly and still just holding that position. What, you know, I've started with the lowest of any council, the government boards. I almost have that one completed the way I did that one. But we, they have a brand new procedure where we're going to put something on the rail side, I don't know, she only elaborate a little bit on that. And we're going to actually ask people to apply to those positions. And to get quality people, I mean, some of these boards, we might, might as well face the fact, we had just place people have a body there. Wasn't really people who understand the boards, because we want people there who understand, understand these boards. Because we want to support them. But we need to get quality people on these boards. And if we, I mean, I think the whole state is doing this. Orangeburg is doing the power program, we're leading the way. And, and they'll have stuff really on the internet, and we're going to do other ways too. Because we understand some people don't use computers. But we have to do something to get some boards there and, and to get it right. What they'll do, that'll cut, cut out some of county council interference with these boards. And we, and I don't particularly like doing that anyway. But if we get quality people there who know exactly what they're doing, I think this is going to cut out some of the, some of the interference from us. Jill, you, you elaborate anything on that?
So on our website coming soon, you'll see a link to match board. So should you choose to want to apply for one of the boards, it really gives us a chance to see people and what their interests are within the community. You could apply for a board that you're genuinely interested in. And that way, we have a pool of applicants who are qualified and of course, interested in that actual board and commission. So you'll see that soon. There will be a widget on our website along with an explanation. You can click on it and it'll take you through a whole, through a program where you can submit your application as well. Another option is, please, if, you know, you don't like applications on the computer or are interested in doing it, that way, please contact us in the administrative offices. I'll walk you through, take your application over the phone and that sort of thing.
What does the rail side also let us see? Because in terms of, a lot of times, we don't know when people terms up. We don't know when, and, and it gets just carried over and over and over. And so this will help us also to see when we, it'll all automatically pop up when somebody determines up and we can look at that.
Well, even they can look at it. Sometimes they don't even know what they're trying to aspire.
I mean, it's, you know, we got people who can't, I mean, you know, they're really, I mean, sick people still there. They may even have some deceased people that are still on boards and still in names, you know. John, you need to elaborate on that?
No, sir, I think you. I might just say, my only concern on this one, the, the twenty-two, twenty-six, and twenty-two, twenty-seven, do we see those as tied together or not? I mean, are they linked in any way? I guess that's my question. Well, yes, sir. The, the twenty-six and the twenty-seven, yes. Okay. Overall, the boards and commissions on twenty-six and then specifically the fire in twenty-seven.
Right. And, and again, when we do, I'll go ahead, since we haven't got twenty-seven yet, but I, I was going to start and suggest in twenty-seven that we look at tabling twenty-two, twenty-seven until the first meeting of January. And if they're tied together, I guess then that would apply to twenty-six as well. And one of the concerns you brought up earlier.
And one of the concerns brought up earlier, uh, by Mr. Raceback, with, uh, obviously, it, it does appear we have a great deal of interest from our various fire services around the county tonight. And certainly, I think if we were, hopefully, spoke to, we would probably do a pretty strong message if they were not as informed about the whole, um, process that we're entering into. And, uh, of course, we don't, we got it by title, first reading by title only now, the document is not written, it's in a draft form, or prepared early draft form. And then, of course, the other fact is, this is the last time I'll be in this seat, so, uh, Ms. Bodden, who's here tonight, obviously, would just give, uh, a, a kind of a courtesy to her, she started off in this, and, and I have the same opportunity to weigh in on that in three readings, uh, as, as someone's been serving. So, I, I mean, for those two reasons, and I think both are important, uh, I'm gonna certainly recommend that we, uh, just put off, certainly, twenty-two, twenty-seven until that first meeting in January, and if they're tied together, I suppose I'll, I'll let a train motion to be both of them.
Are they not necessarily tied together now, I mean, I think we need to go forward with twenty-six, because we could go live, and, and we were talking at board the other day in a work session. We were all at work session, and we talked about all of this. But definitely, I don't think we need to table twenty-six, I don't mind tableing twenty-seven to ease any fears of people in this room, or R and Ts, or anybody else. But twenty-six, I mean, we need to get on board with that, and let's move forward.
Yeah, I, I certainly not gonna, gonna make too big of a struggle over twenty-six. They are tied together, but in other words, they're, they're similar, but they're not the two. We have a different reading schedule, like, uh, so we should do that, so. I'm fine with that, I mean, as long as we address the one in twenty-seven on the first.
I'm fine, I mean, and we can have more, maybe John can give us an update on what twenty-seven is to going to be. But, I mean, definitely, I don't think we need to just kick twenty-six down, but I don't, I don't understand your concern on twenty-seven.
Anyway, we, we don't, uh, can't get a motion to approve, uh, first reading on, uh, uh, ordinance twenty, twenty-two, dash twenty-six.
Second, I'll second.
I'll have to move a second, any further discussion on that? Only pay my eye?
Aye.
Likewise, as I said. Now, we're down to ordinance twenty, twenty-two dash twenty-seven, and ordinance to amend chapter thirty, article two, dissolve. And I think that word there, from what I've been hearing, I've been getting some calls today myself, cause a lot of, a lot of confusion. I think John's gonna come up and tell us something about that. Dissolve the county fire commission, which is amend chapter thirty, article three, the right of the duties. I'm still at the Samuel Fire District in the Calhoun County rules.
Yes, sir, thank you.
John, everybody talking, I tell you what, I don't wanna get a motion, and I probably won't get a motion too, I don't think, and we get a motion, so.
Well, you did a first, and all.
I, I will.
No, we can, that's fine, well, let's get an update on what we're talking about.
Yeah, that's what I said, I have an update.
Okay, thank you, uh, and yes, uh, I do apologize for the, uh, legal wording there of dissolve, I know it's created a lot of problems. Uh, but ultimately, that piece, uh, the details behind that will amend chapter three, article two, to dissolve the county fire commission and remove sections thirty, nineteen through thirty, twenty-three. The purpose, the county fire commission was previously replaced by the Calhoun County Rural Fire District. Uh, the Calhoun County Rural Fire District was established in twenty-fourteen to replace this commission, but an ordinance to repeal it was never passed. And so, this is going back and passing something that should've been done in twenty-fourteen, okay? Then, the, uh, regarding the duties and responsibilities to both districts, the, the county rural district as well as the sand run, uh, district, um, and this applies to both. The advisory board and its members will offer advice and recommended, recommendations to the administration and council that will help Calhoun County grow and achieve its goals. We are finding in Calhoun County, like a lot of rural counties, that with emergency services of all kinds, the day-to-day operation requests and the needs are growing, while the volunteer spirit is diminishing due to jobs and family obligations. This change has nothing to do with the existing board members, the operations, or any of the volunteers. This is for trying to keep up with the growth that is currently here and expecting, and also expecting growth. In order to support the fire service and continue to receive fire protection that we all expect, council and administration feels that by making both districts a department of the county, all eight stations will have more uniformity and will ultimately be on the same page. To support this vision, we will need to hire a fire marshal, as well as additional fire, full-time paid staff, to keep up with the growing needs of our fire service. By utilizing our existing financial and procurement departments, we can keep a better track of funds and expenditures when they happen. Standardization of equipment and gear will help reduce costs, as well as allowing us to keep spares and reserves. Our grants administration department can also assist in researching opportunities for grants to support equipment, gear, and trucks. We can truly benefit from having a fire coordinator, coordinating with the board members for advice and needs for all stations, and report to the administration in a very similar way as our existing department heads do. There are some stations that have more and some with less, but this plan will allow for more equitable distribution of needs across the county.
Okay. You have a motion, what were the other one?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we table, uh, ordinance twenty, twenty-two dash twenty-seven until the first meeting in January twenty-three, for the reasons I've just covered a moment ago.
Say a second?
Second.
I'll have to move a second, any further discussion? Only pay my eye?
Aye.
Likewise, as I said. Thank you all. Now, we're down to ordinance twenty, twenty-two, dash twenty-eight, first reading by title only. An ordinance to amend chapter twenty-two, article two, and add article three to require a franchise agreement. And that's a petition in Calhoun County. John, I wish you all explained a little bit too, why we do first reading, or, or, and so they can public, kind of, see why, why we do a first reading by title, by title only.
And I'll ask Crystal to come up and kind of explain this one, if you don't mind, but the title only, uh, a lot of times with these ordinances, we don't have all the information. A lot of times, the information, we know, county council knows what the reason for the ordinance is, or we, we wouldn't even have it on the paper. Okay, so there has been discussion, there has been knowledge of these ordinances, but to settle in motion, a lot of times, they're time-sensitive, uh, that we put the first reading by title only, and, and move forward from that.
John, I mean, actually, one, one, could I do right, and tell them that, that ordinance has to have a public hearing?
Yes, it, it does, every ordinance has to have.
We will have a chance to come in and voice the opinion before we make a foul vote. Chris, Chris, all you go ahead.
Okay, so, when I first took in this position in two thousand eighteen, we were under the impression that this franchise agreement ordinance was already in place. Once, um, I got with the county administration, um, over the last couple of years, um, we realized it was never actually put into motion. What it's really saying is, if an ambulance service comes into Calhoun County and wants to work with us, which, uh, we definitely need the private service, because we can't offer all the dialysis transports, all the doctor's office visits that are required for some of our citizens. So, all it is, is just saying that they're here, um, let us review, um, any, if we have any questions or complaints of a citizen, we can work with them to try to resolve some of those issues. If there are problems with it, then I could come to you guys, let you guys know some of the concerns from our citizens. Um, it doesn't really cost anything unless you guys want to put any penalties in place for any problems that they may have, um, not needing the franchise agreement. Um, but right now, there's no actual cost, it's just more or less letting us know that they're there, that they're running calls with us. Um, it also does, um, the only other part of it would say, if we need mutual aid agreement, like, we are short, we're out of trucks, which happens more frequently than it used to, they could help us with running a call in our, our community for that.
Did they have any requirements to provide us with any references or anything like that?
So, there is some requirements that, um, that we can, that we put in there, that they can give us how many calls that they're running in our area, keep up with some of the statistics of how many people utilize these extra services, because if there were something to happen in the future, those are the, the citizens that we probably need to help get, um, out of the area if we have some type of evacuation need. It'd actually probably give us a little bit more information than what we currently actually have.
Anyone have any questions, Chris? I think I have a motion for a second, uh, only, do I have a motion?
No, no, no.
Do I have a motion?
I'll take a motion.
I'll second it.
I'll have to move a second, uh, that approve ordinance, first reading of the ordinance twenty, twenty-two, dash twenty-eight. Any further discussion? Only pay my eye?
Aye.
Likewise, as I said. I assume we have, uh, I'd like to give, uh, people like, uh, Dr. Molder from the Lord's Savannah, he made the trip all the way from here, you know, Dr. Molder, you have anything like that?
Just Merry Christmas to y'all.
Okay, thanks, sir. Okay, nothing else, uh, John, you are.
Yep, I've just got one thing, uh, just a reminder, the holiday day at the Hayward Park, uh, will be this, uh, Saturday, the seventeenth, from two to nine P.M. Uh, that's at Hayward Park, uh, please join us if you can. And that's it for me, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I know I'm not allowed to speak, but could I just tell Councilman Nelson that we appreciate his years of service in Calhoun County? Councilman Nelson, we appreciate everything you've done for this county, for the many years you've served. Thank you for all of us and all of Calhoun County.
I was gonna, I, I guess this is before the executive session, I was like, well, you know, I, I was gonna ask if I could steal a moment to, on the outside of the ministry, I just have a few words, kind of tied twelve years, you know, that, so. Uh, first, I just want to, a lot of people to thank, certainly thank my, your right, and she's on the home of crud nights, and she might've been here, but she's, um, getting nowhere at, and I thank her for her support of many years, just like she did my years of service. Uh, the folks, uh, folks here tonight, I mean, just the two, and I have two inputs from some of these terrific people that, that serve our community, it means more than you know. Uh, and beyond that, those that, that I serve with, um, in some capacity, the first responders, and, and just the folks, the voters, constituents, that, uh, just continue to give me the very deep and, uh, great privilege of serving them for, uh, three whole terms, and, and just those voters, those constituents. That, that just meant so much to me throughout the time. Um, and good Lord just gave me the, the capability to make up for my many inadequacies, uh, I just, uh, I'm amazed by the grace that He provides in my life. And, uh, certainly with the way I was, I was reared, some of the things, uh, I could've, I could've made decisions on, He certainly made up for many of those shortcomings on my part, so thank Him for that. And I really want to thank my coworkers up here on council, I mean, it's picked out a different disposition from where we're starting, but, uh, some of the new ones, some of the old ones, uh, Cecil James now, we've been up here the whole time, James has been up here longer than I have. But, uh, it, it really is, uh, you see us give and take, and, and sometimes we have some nashes, some disagreements, but it really is a team effort. And, uh, as we go forward, it's one of those special things that you have to be able to really have a fuss with someone in public, and then turn around the next five minutes and just take hold of something that's totally different, and put that aside, and care about people's business. And, and, and so, I think we've been able to do that quite well, and these guys are really a, a very mature group, and, uh, I just am very, excuse me, very honored to serve with them. And that's been very important, because we've had some, just to, just review a few things, we've had some difficult votes up here, and just, uh, go over a few, we, we bought our golf course, and y'all might recall, that was kind of contentious vote, we had to split on that. We had masking mandates, those are some of the things we discussed with some dissension, and, uh, and, and taught in terms of how to do taxation more recently. And we've had some votes where we just disagree, and then we come back and we just, uh, put that aside and continue to serve people. And so, just like in life, there are a lot of disagreements that you may have, but you learn as a mature person to put them aside and, and do what's best for the people that you're attending to, whether it's your family, or in this case, your community and your, and the county. But I really like to focus on, on the, uh, back here, the success that we had, just a, a few, I'm just gonna list a few that we had, uh, just in the twelve years I've been on, uh, some of the industries and businesses, which we bought into the county, we bought in, uh, Sphere, Thermal King, that was right toward the beginning, Fitz, High Tech Specialty Fabrics, Zeus, Pelmetto Express, Titan Concrete, numerous solar projects, which I don't even have, uh, wanna list here or have time to list them all. W C Industrial Wire, those are just a few, that's not an all inclusive list of some of the businesses that some of you folks in this room probably work at, or have friends, neighbors, family that work at those industries. And, uh, those, uh, serve to help keep our taxes low, they provide, uh, a great opportunity for people for employment, and I was very proud to be able to get a lot of those. A lot of those came from Lexington County, incidentally, that, that were over there, and we just gave them a better deal, and it came to us. And, uh, so I'm very proud of all the time that we've been able to do that. Some of you may not know that we actually involved, early by, uh, type on Council James, remember, and Cecil, of course, we actually, um, did a lot to keep Devero where it is, Devero, we almost lost Devero. A lot of y'all don't know that, it was a split vote, and we had to really, really work hard to show those people that we were the best place, they were gonna take those jobs and go to Eastern Europe. But those officers worked at Devero, I mean, it was a close, close thing, we whined, we dined, we did all of those things that you do in this, this little environment we work in. And we made a persuasive argument, and Devero's got a new wing down there now, you know? And so, that's one of those things, we didn't take a lot of whole accolades from, but at that time, before we didn't take accolades, but we did that. And, and I can guarantee you, if we'd have been indifferent toward those folks that, uh, run Devero, we'd just say, well, take it or leave it, that's what you got, they'd been gone, and those jobs been gone. So, that's a pretty important thing that the people on this county council do sometimes, the folks out there that maybe it's not known about, it's not recognized, but we really do work hard. And that was one of those, one of those successes we had. And we continue to work with others like DAC, uh, some of you may not know that, uh, that DAC, one of the DAC plants close to here, Loomis, was closed down some years ago. And it, it could've been us, and they never really made a severe pass to do that, but it's one of those things, all these industries we work with, if you don't show them that they're welcome to be here, and you provide the right kind of policies for them to balance a good taxation, good workforce, and, and, and just good business practices, they'll even go somewhere else. And so, we worked on that quite hard. Uh, some of the other things we did, uh, we established the, uh, Sand Run Industrial Park, uh, which was, uh, enacted, of course, it's been in transition, they got a new owner now, but there's respect building going up now, that'll provide many jobs, and there's many other slots up there. Over the years, that's probably gonna be eight hundred billion plus dollars of investment, when that's built out, it could be a billion dollars worth of investment. That's a lot of money in Calhoun County, which will serve to keep our taxes low, and give our children and grandchildren jobs for years to come. So, that's an important thing. We made a, uh, I think a milestone agreement, which we just voted on tonight, for the Hayward, Hayward Recreational Facility. Uh, just a great public-private partnership that saved us about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, way back, or when they first looked at that. But we made an agreement with the, the Hayward, good folks at Hayward, and that's been something that's gonna be a great part for us, for our kids. I'm looking forward to taking my grandkids up there in the days ahead. We helped them pass the Capitol Project's sales tax, and, uh, successfully defended it at Supreme Court level, so that the will of people and, and, and the benefit of our first responders would be taken care of. And so, real proud, that worked out for us. We, um, conducted the Sand Run area study, and then that led to community zoning, uh, rules that we passed in March of, uh, twenty-one. And then it, and it led to a sustaining of our, of our, the Sand Run area plan, again, what we decided in the, in the recent months, in terms of how we want that, uh, have our community to look. But that was something that we did as a plan, we did the plan, we did the zoning, which is a difficult thing, and then we helped do that. And I want to thank all my members that sustained us and worked with us on that. For the future, uh, we still have several things outstanding as I step away. We've got, uh, a, a Sand Run Fire Substation that's still due to be built as part of the, uh, CPSC tax that I just mentioned, uh, that's out there, and looking forward to seeing that going up. We have ongoing development in Sand Run, uh, as I mentioned, respect building and other things that will be coming in that will greatly benefit our community. And, uh, looking forward to some improvement, improvements to our collection facility out just up there today, and that's one of those things too, that I'm, I'm anxious to do. But I'm just very gratified and happy to be able to pass it off to her back, I know she's gonna do a fantastic job. And my commitment is to stand by and help her in any way that I can, so that she can be told as successfully she steps on board. And it's just been a wonderful time, I'm not stepping away, I'm stepping back. I'm still gonna be here, I'm not gonna jump in and take a big load, but it's just time for me to move on. I, I'm a big believer of term limits, I think that, uh, the more we as a society, and this is at local, state, and federal level, have more people that serve a limited period of time, and then move on, the more those we have, I think the better off we'll be as a society. So, this is my little, small demonstration to show you how that works. So, God bless y'all, I appreciate you, love y'all, and I will be going anywhere unless good Lord takes me since though. Thank you very much.
We, uh, I'd like to thank John for pushing and working with him, uh, you know, John always would tell me, James, we agree ninety percent of the time. And that's the way it should be, I mean, we wouldn't need five of us if we were gonna say the same thing. We wouldn't need to look at five other places up here, not if we're gonna say the same thing over and over again. You have differences, you talk about them, you disagree, two agree, if we've done that. And I appreciate working with John. He and I have, had a good relationship. I, you know, I heard a little differently when you were about to come here. Well, we'll get it when I, it turned, it turned, it turned out to be different. I mean, he's turned out to be a guy a little, I think everybody in this county, that's the important thing. And we just one little small county. I, I was looking at the little map, and we're practically the smallest county in the state landwide. I, you know, I don't know if anybody else is smaller than us landwide, and two or three is smaller than us population-wise. So, we try to be one big happy family. And husband and wives fall out, tongue and tooth fall out. I mean, we know that gonna happen, but we make up. Nobody, you know, I've never left a meeting here, really, where none of us is actually bad with each other. Absolutely. And so, I appreciate that. But I want to thank John for his services and letting it know we're gonna be calling on him in the future, because, I mean, he's a, gonna be a great asset to us. Not necessarily on the council, but, uh, he'll be a great asset.
Give us a few moments, just catch my breath.
Yeah. But anyway, we're gonna thank him. Let's, let's give him another hand. Okay. I think we got a couple of executive session matters. Got personnel matter with the Calhoun, got sheriff office, and economic and development matter with Project King. Have a motion that we go into the, the executive session. Press, I have anything. Have a motion that we go into the executive session to, um, discuss those two items.
So, we're, second.
I'll move a second. Any further discussion? Only take my eye.
Aye.
Hold the likewise eyes, have it. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Appreciate it.